All right, moving on to conduct of business. City clerk.
Item 7B, consider adopting a resolution amending the bylaws of the Citizens Revenue Measure Oversight Committee to increase the number of members from five.
City clerk, I apologize. We're on conduct of business A.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
You know what? Let me, if you don't mind. Item A, receive presentation on the closeout of the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Project and adopt the resolutions, accepting the phase six of the street improvement project as completed, authorizing the filing of notice of completion with the San Mateo County Records Office and authorizing the release of withheld retention in the amount of $168,976 and accepting the final report on the closeout of the overall Crestmore Reconstruction Project and the Crestmore Trust. And I believe we are turning this over to Harry Burrows, who is waiting. So if you could bring him in, please.
Try to bring Harry in. One moment.
While that occurs, why don't I give a quick introduction?
City manager?
Sure. Javon Grogan, city manager. So our report will be given by Harry Burrows, the city's contract project manager for the Crestmore Neighborhood Reconstruction Project. As the community will remember, there was a devastating gas pipeline explosion that occurred on September 9th, 2010, almost 10 years. And we are tonight closing out the last phase of that project, and that is the Phase Four that we will talk about. But the total community restoration was $50 million, $500,000 and change. And Harry will talk about that and the phase out of Phase Four. We will also have Jennifer Dianos from the city manager's office to talk about the closeout of the trust that was established for distribution of $50 million from PG&E to fund the reconstruction effort. So without further ado, it seems like the PowerPoint is up and Harry is ready. So, Harry, take it.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. As Javon stated, I'm Harry Burrows. I'm the city's contract project manager for the Crestmore Reconstruction Project, and I have hopefully good news for the city council tonight as we move to officially closeout the Crestmore Reconstruction Project and the Crestmore Irrevocable Trust. The items before you tonight include the acceptance of the last construction project in the neighborhood, the Phase Four Street Improvement Project, as complete and authorizing notice of completion to be filed and the release of final retention. Additionally, the council is being asked to accept the resolution or being asked to adopt a resolution, accepting the final report on the closeout of the Crestmore Reconstruction Project and Irrevocable Trust. So I don't want to spend a whole lot of time going through the history of the project, but I do think it's important that I briefly recap some of the major milestones as shown here. So immediately after the pipeline explosion and fire, the cleanup and reconstruction of the Crestmore Canyon slopes and retaining wall was undertaken during the fall of 2010 and into the spring of 2011. The $50 million Irrevocable Trust was established in March of 2011 for the reconstruction of the neighborhood. About a year later, the $70 million settlement was reached between the city and PG&E for the ultimate establishment of the San Bruno Community Foundation. And with the exception of the canyon slope and retaining wall repairs that were done in the immediate aftermath of the fire and explosion, the first infrastructure repair project didn't start until early 2012. It should be remembered that the explosion site could not be backfilled for over a year. It sat there fenced off as it was considered a crime scene and remained open until all investigations by the NTSB and others were completed. At that point, we can start the reconstruction efforts in earnest. So from 2012 through 2016, we undertook five separate construction projects for the work in the neighborhood. The Earl Glenview Park was completed and opened in late 2019, and the Phase Four Street Improvement Project, the final project, it was actually started in late 2016 and is here before you tonight for acceptance and closeout. So a quick visual recap of the previous phases of the neighborhood reconstruction is shown here. I'm not going to describe each one, but the earlier phases consisted of mostly the replacement of all of the underground infrastructure, the water lines, sewer lines, storm drain lines. And the Phase Four Project reconstructed all of the surface above ground improvements. So to put the overall project into perspective, here's a listing of all of the now completed nine reconstruction contracts that were performed along with their corresponding construction costs. These are the actual construction contract amounts with the contractors, not the total project costs. So the Phase Four Street Improvement Project consisted of the removal and replacement of all of the curbs, gutters, and sidewalks in the entire neighborhood, new decorative, energy-efficient LED streetlight system to replace the old unreliable streetlights, reconstruction and repaving of all of the streets, including the installation of subgrains beneath almost the entire new roadway section, and installation of decorative intersection treatments at the request of the residents. There are several other aspects of the Phase Four Project that I think are worth noting as well. The previous phases of the project constructed much of the underground storm drainage facilities, but didn't finish them at the road surface. The prior projects did this intentionally as we were still in discussions with the residents regarding the inclusion of traffic calming measures, items such as bulbouts and planters and other aesthetic features that impacted the surface location of the ultimate catch basins and other storm drain facilities. However, once that concept of the bulbouts and the decorative treatments was abandoned, the Phase Four Project proceeded and it had to match the underground infrastructure to the surface improvements. Secondly, this project touched the private property and improvements of all 375 homes within the neighborhood. Each home's interface with the new sidewalk was different and included landscaping, driveways, walkways, pavers, stones, cobbles, retaining walls, decorative brick walls, and many other unique features, you know, that were individual to each home. Private drainage from roof-down spouts and yards also had to be accommodated. So anticipating the question of why the project took three and a half years to complete, the answers are many and include the difficulty and complexity of replacing and constructing infrastructure of this magnitude in a fully occupied neighborhood was underestimated by the contractor and quite frankly, you know, probably by staff as well. Keeping access to residences while new driveways, utilities, and new roadways were constructed proved to be much more time-consuming than was anticipated. The project was further delayed at the beginning due to conflicts immediately after construction started with the existing gas line and the new streetlight foundations, and that required a redesign of the streetlight system while we were in construction. The contractor also experienced some cracking issues and portions of the completed concrete work after he had replaced much of the sidewalk and curb and gutter area, and we would not let him proceed to paving until this work was corrected. That was a further delay in the project. Additionally, weather was a factor as we endured two very lengthy and heavy winters. The project completion was delayed due to numerous punch list items as well related to surface restoration at the individual residences. Remedial paving work was also required in several areas because we had failed subgrade beneath the new roadway. We tried to remove as much of that as possible during construction, but that was part of the reason why we added all these new subgrains in that neighborhood is there's so much subsurface water and springs in that neighborhood that we were successful in accomplishing most of it, but there was a few locations that had to come back with a little bit of remedial So with all of that said, here's a summary of the project at its completion. The original contract was $9.77 million. We added about a 10% construction contingency anticipating the complexity of the project. That gave us a total authorized construction budget of $10.75 million. The final base contract amount, which is adjusted downwards because we didn't, had some adjustments in quantities of certain items and didn't construct a few of the contract items, was $9.4 million. We had change orders in the amount of about $740,000, which yields a final contract amount of $10.2 million. I won't go into a lot of detail. I'll wait and answer any questions you may have on the change orders. I think the staff report provided a fairly good level of detail on what those change orders were. But as we sit here today, all the construction has been completed. They've completed every punch list item with the exception of one residence that they still have to go out there and do a little bit of work on that they promised me they'll get done here in the next week or so, and the project is ready for final acceptance. So we're asking the city council to accept the project as complete and authorize the notice of completion to be filed with the county and the release of any remaining retention. So with the closeout of the Phase Four Project, where does that put us in terms of the overall reconstruction trust? This is a chart of the expenditures that we shared with you in our last update last October. As you can see, the percentages are pretty self-explanatory. Almost 70% of the budget was spent on actual reconstruction and maintenance costs, staff time, about 15% of the total budget, professional services for the federal and state proceedings with the CPUC and the NTSB were another, almost 13%, and 3.5% for administrative and other minor costs. Putting this into perspective in terms of the actual categories of expenses that were tracked throughout the life of the trust is summarized here in this chart. We previously provided the city council with budget updates both in October of 2018 as well as in October of 2019. In 2018, the over-budget amount was projected at $0.4 million, and last October, this amount had been lowered to about $600,000, a little less than $600,000. The final amount, based on what we're projecting here, will be almost $50,000 less than this. So last October, as I described, the city council authorized two specific measures to balance the project budget for this overt that we have shown here. These included the transfer of funds from the Fire Station 52 Capital Fund, Fund 004, and from the Emergency Disaster Recovery Fund, Fund 190. The Fire Station 52 rebuild is a capital improvement project with a separate budget. Costs that were previously charged to the trust are legitimate project costs that should be assigned to the Fire Station 52 CIP. Staff has identified $100,726 of previous expenditures related to the reconstruction of the fire station that had been charged to the trust. These costs were primarily for geotechnical and geologic work for a fault rupture hazard analysis that was required due to the station's proximity to the San Andreas Fault. For the remaining shortfall, staff previously identified approximately $722,000 of costs paid by the trust against Fund 190, the Emergency Disaster Recovery Fund. This reserved amount is sufficient to cover the anticipated remaining shortfall, and this is consistent with the direction from the city council last October. So assuming that the council approves the final closeout of the project tonight, what housekeeping items are still remaining to complete? Well, we're still awaiting final as-built record drawings to be prepared by our civil engineer. They're finalizing those as we speak. We had to wait until the Phase Four Project was completed to get those drawings over to them. We still have some residual vendor invoices that are remaining to be submitted and paid, and we have project archiving and filing that needs to occur. Jennifer will talk a little bit here in a minute about the closeout of the trust, but one of the requirements is that all records related to the project must be kept, so both physical and electronic. So all of these anticipated costs are included in the estimates to complete as shown on the previous chart. So after all the final payments have been processed and paid, the finance department's staff will conduct a final reconciliation of cost and remaining budget and balances in the Emergency Disaster Recovery Fund in order to formally close the Crestmore CIP project and deactivate the fund. So now I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer to briefly discuss the closeout of the Irrevocable Trust.
Thank you, Harry. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jennifer Dianos. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager for the City of San Bruno. I'm here this evening to give you just a brief overview of the closeout of the Crestmore Irrevocable Trust. The trust that Mr. Burrows briefly discussed in his comments earlier was established in March 2011. Trustee Michael Garvey managed the funds through the life of the trust. Earlier this year in February 2020, the trust was fully depleted with the expenditures that we incurred through the life of the project. Requests for reimbursement for expenditures were submitted to the trustee once, twice, sometimes three times a year over the last nine or so years. Each request for reimbursement was audited by trustee Garvey, and those reimbursements with all of the supporting documentation is on file in City Hall and are all considered permanent record for our city's retention policy, just as Mr. Burrows referred to. Following the depletion of the trust funds, trustee Garvey worked to conduct a final audit of the account, including all disbursements and replenishments of funds, and formally closed the trust account out with a zero balance as of February. Trustee Garvey provided a final financial closeout report and submitted the final report to the City of San Bruno and to PG&E. This report is in compliance with the March 2011 agreement. A short reconciliation of the account along with the expenditure categories in totals of each of the categories that Mr. Burrows referred to this evening are available on the city's website at sanbruno.ca.gov under the Crestmore Neighborhood Glenview Fire tab. That concludes my short presentation this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mr. Burrows.
Well, did you have anything else? Sorry, I lost my connection. Mr. Burrows lost his connection, so he is here and available. Mr. Burrows, I'm, now is, anyway. The request to the city council, adopt resolutions accepting the Phase Four Street Improvement Project as complete, authorizing the filing of the notice of completion with the San Mateo County Records Office, and authorizing the release of withheld retention in the amount of $168,977 and accepting the final report on the closeout of the overall Crestmore Reconstruction Project and the Crestmore Trust. And so that is the request of the city council concluding Mr. Burrows' report, and he and Jennifer are here for any questions for council. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, and thank you for the report, Harry. I'm sure we're all relieved. One simple question. Nice mask, Mr. Mayor.
Well, now we're both in the room, so it's ridiculous.
Yeah, good, good, good. So the one resident that hasn't had their work completed yet, you know, promises don't work really well in my book. What happens if it just doesn't get done, and how much is the value of the work?
Well, the value of the work is probably less than $500. It's a small retaining wall drainage issue that needs to just get some remedial work done. So the contractor, I mean, the contractor has given me his word, we had some fairly intense negotiations here as the project closed out. As you can imagine, on a $10.2 million project, there's a lot of loose ends if you can get tied up. So I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I will do my best to make sure that the work occurs.
No, that's understandable, without knowing how much it was and being it so small. It's more understandable, hopefully they'll follow through, right? Otherwise, I guess you'll be fixing it.
You and I out there on the weekend.
No, I can't. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from councilmembers?
To the chair.
Councilmember Davis.
So I guess it'd be a good time since we're wrapping this up, you know, what are some big lessons learned? I mean, I heard you say that the reconstruction and maintenance cost was really sober, it's probably the biggest hurdle to get through and a lot of challenges, but in looking at Slide 10, where you list your overall cost by staff time, community outreach, et cetera, et cetera, were there estimated goals or targets for those, or did we go down a territory where we didn't really have estimated budgets for each of those line items?
Well, I can only speak really to the reconstruction efforts, but what my thoughts are on the other costs were going into this, and Mark Zapparano can probably add some more flavor to this, but you know, going into, you know, 2011 and the establishment of the $50 million reconstruction trust, you know, there was a lot of unknowns related to what efforts were going to have to be undertaken in terms of the legal proceedings. So I believe that that, you know, was a little bit of an unknown in terms of budget. We obviously had some budget creep because of the length of the project, duration of the project in terms of construction. And then as described previously to the council, we had one project where we went back and constructed private sewer laterals in the entire neighborhood with some of the funds, and those, that was a little problematic because we're on private property, which isn't typical for a city to be on private property constructing public improvements or constructing private improvements. So those were probably, from my perspective, the biggest, you know, lessons, but I'll let Mark maybe speak to the proceedings.
Sure, if I may. Mr. Mayor.
Please, Mr. City Attorney.
So there are so many lessons learned, we could probably do an entire presentation on it. And so given the late hour, I'll only mention a couple of them, having been at the city since February of 2011, which was just about, you know, five months after the explosion, and being involved in the setting up of the trust and working through that. I think it's fair to say that the city expected that the work would be, that was necessary to rehabilitate the neighborhood, would be completed or would have been completed sooner. But I think Mr. Burrows is correct that there were a number of decisions made along the way to do work on private property, which was unusual and extended the process. But also, a decision was made early on in the process, not just to repair and restore the facilities that were directly affected by the fire, but to return the neighborhood to completely rejuvenate the entire neighborhood, regardless of whether the homes and infrastructure were affected, so that that way residents could return back to a neighborhood that was completely new, completely modern, and completely brought up to date. And I think that was, everything that we saw after that was a consequence of that initial decision. And then the only other comment I'd make about the various legal proceedings is, again, I think the city believed that it was, those proceedings were over in, or would have been over in 2015, but in fact, it turned out that through the efforts of city staff and consultants, that irregularities were discovered in the CPUC and with PG&E, and that resulted in a cascade of additional information and work that really the city did not anticipate and could never have anticipated, and nor could we have anticipated the benefits to the city that those discoveries procured. And so, for example, those benefits included, of course, not only the $120 million with the $70 million restitution and the $50 million trust, but also the addition of $6 million for the ex parte violations, an additional $1 million on top of that for additional ex parte violations that were discovered, and most recently, the $3 million that was contributed by PG&E for use by the city in the Crestmore Canyon. So all of those benefits far outweighed and outstripped really any expenditure of either professional fees or services or administration fees in the fund. And when you add it all up, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, the city ended up spending less than 5% of the total amount of its recovery on those fees. And I don't know about you, but I don't know where you can find a good lawyer and good consultants for a 5% contingency fee. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Well said, Mark.
Any other questions or comments from council? We're not seeing any. Vice Mayor. Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment that, you know, this has been a long time coming, and I know that there was a lot of frustration in the neighborhood with how long this whole took, and I wanted to offer my personal apology to the residents of the neighborhood for the delays and for having this drag on for so long. The neighborhood is transformed, and we did use an opportunity that we had to use this money and turn this tragedy that we went through into something positive. And, you know, what we were able to do there with renovating that entire neighborhood and creating a brand-new park, it's something that we wouldn't have had an opportunity to do otherwise. You know, we're not talking about, you know, not being able to pave streets and not being able to do some of the things that we'd love to do in all the neighborhoods, but here was a unique opportunity to do that. Yet for, you know, a decade, this neighborhood had to put up with all the construction and torn-up roads and, you know, things shifting around and, you know, and it definitely was not well thought out. I think in the beginning, we identified opportunities as we went along, and that definitely, you know, it's scope creep and it led the budget creep, and that's definitely part of the problem. But in the end, we were looking to do what was best for the neighborhood, and when we started replacing sewer mains, it only made sense to do the laterals. And when we did that, it only made sense to fix sidewalks and to fix ramps and to do pavement, and so it grew. And ultimately, we were able to provide that neighborhood with some really, really beautiful improvements. I'm glad we're finally done. Like I said, I do want to apologize to the neighborhood for having taken so long to get it completed, but I am glad that we were here and want to thank staff and Mr. Burrows for all the work that went into getting us to this point.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments from council this time? I also wanted to check to see if we had anybody from the audience. I'm not seeing any hands, and Melissa will correct me, but I do not see any at this time.
There are no hands up.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Okay, if not, okay. Councilmember Mason? If there's any others who are going to speak, please raise your hand, and then I will conclude, and then we'll go back to action.
Yeah, this is going to be an action item, right?
It will be, yes.
Okay, so then I just, for purposes of the record, I just want to say that, you know, I had really never walked in this area until the campaign, and one of the first houses that I went to, a woman opened the door and started crying when she told me about the loss of a dear friend of hers in the fire. And it was very clear, if not clear before, how open the wound is still here in San Bruno. In looking at tonight's report and just really realizing the very small impact that I've had in only six months on what's going on where this council has been here for at least four years, I just don't feel like I have enough information around this incredibly complex issue to vote on this tonight. So I just wanted to let everybody know for the record that I will be abstaining from this vote, and there's no, there's really no comment one way or the other from me. I just want to let you know that the reason is I just feel it's really too complex for someone who's been on the council for six months. Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know that. I appreciate it. You know, I'm not going to echo all that was said, but I will say that being there on the Hill with then the mayor, Ruane, was something to witness, to seeing the injured, to going to the hospital, to the burn wards. Just spoke to, less than two weeks ago, Mr. Craig. One of those lots are the park next to the bullis up top. That's, he lost his wife and he lost his daughter that night because he and his other daughter were at a back-to-school night. And we hadn't talked in some time that he's ever been back. His daughter today, the surviving daughter, is a schoolteacher, and, you know, it has been a very painful time. His wife and daughter were the first funeral that I attended at St. Cecilia's in San Francisco, where she was involved with the school and to see all the classmates. This is something truly, when it transpired, which there was no blueprint, there was no training, there was no way. training, there was no way to prepare or plan of what it would take to reconstruct the neighborhood. One of the commitments that was said back then was, "We will be here for you, and if that means holding your hand, that means a hug, whatever it means, we'll get through it together." And to Vice Mayor's point, they have been resilient, courageous, and patient. And this is something that when these, this community faces these unique challenges unprecedented times, it rallies, it comes together, and the outpouring. And so, you know, it is one of those things that people do want to turn the page, but not forget those eight that were killed, nor what this community faced, but how it faced it. So I know it's been a long time, and it is, I am glad that we're here at this point before our 10th year. So with that, we have a resolution to accept Phase Four and to accept the final report of the closeout. So is there any action from council?
I move we accept the resolution, or, sorry, approve the resolution accepting Phase Four Street Improvement Project as complete.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and the mask is off because I'm, Mr. Burrows left. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason is abstained. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye. Okay, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Burrows.
There's a second resolution.
City Attorney, can that be done? Was that okay to do at one, or do we have to do it separate?
I think we have two resolutions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. So the second one will be accepting the final report. Is there action?
I move that we approve the second resolution. Then this one is to close out the overall project.
Yes.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason is abstained. Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye, and just to confirm to Councilmember Mason, she had articulated, I know she didn't say the words abstained, but to abstain to both items that we just passed resolution. She's nodding in the affirmative.